At this time, I'll call the September 16th, 2021 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, we have three items that we're going to add to the agenda. First, we're going to consider, in addition, a letter to the U.S. Economic Development Administration in support of a grant application by the Abilene CBB. The second item to add is a consideration of the reappointment of LaVita Montgomery to represent Dixon County on the NCF HAAO Board of Directors. And I'm not sure what that is.
North Central foothills regional area agency.
Okay. So lots of alphabet to remember.
Brilliant.
And then the third item is to consider the resolution to expand the rural water district, number two, their operating boundaries. And with those added to the agenda, I would move that we approve the amended agenda.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the amended agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the September 9th meeting. It also includes payroll of $435,281.3, a special check for the county attorney, $62, wire payments, which includes credit cards of $14,330.23, utilities, $9,810.88.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have the motion and second for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Commission comments. Ron, we'll start with you.
I did spend a little time yesterday in Manhattan with the North Central Regional Juvenile Detention Center board meeting. I am pleased to announce there was a situation with a trainee executive that was coming in that had embezzled some money, and all those funds have been recovered, and that matter's been taken care of. So things are running pretty smooth and looking good.
Okay. Craig?
Yes, last Thursday evening, I attended, as alternate non-voting member, the Dixon County Corporation discussion about housing and childcare and workforce development. Chuck Stittman, the job, and his two staff members are really stepping up to develop and promote Dixon County. That's all in.
Okay. And some of that subject matter we discussed earlier today, we had Elizabeth Wees here with the Community Foundation and discussed some of those issues as also if there were ways that we could leverage some of the funding mechanism that we have. And like we are with many organizations, it's helpful to have community partnerships and county partnerships because together we can work, we're working on a lot of the same issues anyway, and together we can work together and maybe just create more value to some of the discussion. We also had Lisa Berg here, and she is with the Appraisers Office, and she gave us an update. There are a few items that are going to go to the Board of Tax Appeals, so as referred to as BODA. And then we also had some discussion as far as some of the valuations, as far as grassland and dry land. And once again, she receives that information. It's not something at the local county office in the various counties. It's not something that she creates those values. But that certainly has an impact on our county. And then we also had a presentation by Chanel Dokendorf, and she went ahead and told us about the coronavirus state local fiscal recovery funds that are available, or commonly known as SLF, or S- you know, if I could have worked a U in there instead of fiscal slurp or something easier to, I'm not sure how you pronounce this.
I don't know.
Okay. So that's all we have for commission comments. And I don't believe there's any committee reports, so we're going to go ahead and move on to petitions and proclamations. We do not have any of those. But this is opportunity, if someone has a public comment that they would want to make on anything that is not on the agenda, or some question or comment, this would be opportunity to do that. And we would just ask them to give your name and address. And having said that, we still receive comments throughout the week by email and phone calls and people that we run into. And we certainly welcome feedback and comments. Since we do not have any public comments, we're going to go ahead and move on. We have a public hearing at 11:15, and since we're not to 11:15 yet, we'll go ahead and go back to that part of the agenda at 11:15. So we'll go ahead with our report of county officers and our county administrator, Brad Hallman, if you'd give your report at this time.
Sure. One day, I participated in a Zoom meeting with Elizabeth and some other business owners in the community as well. It's, I guess it's a firm that's doing some research for the EDC on behalf of the EDC, and had a very good meeting, I thought, for an hour or so that really illustrated some of the needs in our community for economic growth. And as we talked in the work session, that primarily the two needs that we continue in hurting that meeting were childcare and housing, and needing those two areas to be dealt with before a community can really grow and prosper the way we want it to. So I think it helps add some confidence in my mind as to moving forward and what we can do in that arena to help support our local businesses in those areas. And I think it'll be a good move. And every time I turn around, it seems like in the last six months a year, that's what we continue hearing from everywhere. And it's not just here. Regionally, it's, I mean, we're seeing it on the news. We're seeing it other communities. We heard about it last week at the Regional Commission meeting at Clay Center. So it's not unique to us. It is a concern across the board for all communities. And it's the downside to that is, or the good side is, we're not alone. Downside is, it means we're competing with everyone else to solve the problem. So when it comes to staffing shortages and everything else. But it was a good meeting, and we'll continue to work on that and as we've indicated. So we do have the upcoming countywide cleanup, starting on the 27th. It'll be the last week of this month. And I know Abilene is doing their thing, and I think Solomon and Chapman are also participating in that, as is Harrington. So we will promote that as we have in the past. I know we've always put extra staff out at the transfer station to help unload loads when people back in or arrive. And that way, it helps expedite the process of people getting through there because of the extra traffic that we will have. So the last thing I had for today was a little update on the construction. It's a PowerPoint, and I don't know that I can get through it in five minutes, but we can certainly start it if you'd like and see how far we can get along. Okay? Things continue to progress in the courthouse and with the renovation. I'm going to-
Do you want the lights off?
No, I don't think-
That's pretty good, right?
And so, and I'll kind of go through each one as we go here and kind of tell you where we're looking. Now, this is second floor in the old jail booking area. If you walked into the booking area. And this was, again, this was Tuesday, I think, when we took these pictures. I'm going to back up and stop that timing because I don't want it to go automatically. Give me just a second. I think I can just do it that way. Hopefully. Okay. So this is the booking area. As you can see, they've got the south windows knocked out, and they're dumping the debris out the window. These walls, I think, are probably gone by now, or the majority of them. This is kind of in the same position, looking back at where they're dumping the material out the windows. This is one of the front cells that were held females and trustees. The walls are all lined with steel, and they're taking the steel off the walls. Apparently, it's going to transition on. So we're looking back in the main cell block. One more time. Bear with me.
Does it give you the option on?
There we go.
Okay.
So there's been a lot of- One more time. There we go. We'll get there. Okay. But a lot of work done back here. This is the main cell block, or what used to be the cell block. You can see down here, which is a catwalk in front of the cells. And this was the open area in the general population. It's a little bit different angle of that where they're cutting. They've cut the steel ceiling out. They're cutting the bars and stuff out. And this is just kind of looking back towards what used to be the control room. And they're looking at the control boxer now. So top floor, second floor, looking down the hallway towards the west. Now, at the end is what used to be District Court, now is County Clerk's Office. And you can see they're starting to get things into the ceiling. And as we move into the courtroom, they're getting the ceiling grid in. It's the Judge Sexton's courtroom. I don't know whether I told you or not, we were up there a couple weeks ago. Judge Sexton came by on Friday, and we were just kind of showing him around. While we were standing there, a train went by, and you couldn't hear it, literally, could not hear it. I had to stand up on a box over there to look at to make sure that's what the noise was. And I said, Judge, you realize the train's going by? And talking at 20, he said, no, you're kidding. I said, no. That's how much the inflation and the blocking on that north wall has made an impact. So we certainly solved that problem.
And they had to stop during proceedings.
They had to stop court, absolutely. Yeah.
And hear answers or comments?
So things are progressing very well. Here, we're in the, behind the courtroom, in where the jury room, this will be the jury room. They're putting in the little jury room has a little kitchenette so you can eat and continue to do your deliberation and stuff if you need, if it goes through a meal. And then we're in the county attorney's office. This is their north hallway, and they have a little, it's called a coffee nook here outside a couple offices and a bathroom coming in there. But you can see the ceiling grids getting put in there, and the walls are all painted. So this is the south side of their area, which this will be, I think there's four desks that go out here in a common area when it's all said and done for staff. And then they've got a little break room area back here towards the back that they'll have within their office. So.
We'll go ahead and break away for a public hearing. So stay tuned for the rest of the slide presentation. It's, we'll have our hearing break. So at this time, we have published a public hearing for the rural water district number two. And either Brad or Doug, do you want to just, before we open the hearing, give just briefly a little bit what this is about?
Well, this is an expansion request on behalf of Rural Water District number two. I believe they have a couple people that had requested to be included in the Rural Water District that we're not currently on. And so this is the legal process to go through by, which we expand their, I guess you call it a franchise area, to include the additional customers.
Okay. So at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would want to make comment as far as the pro-water district proposal we have here on number two, this would be your opportunity for comment. I am going to go ahead and just mention as far as the comment, and we would, and this would be part of the motion, and this is kind of the advice of our attorney, that this language be included specific, that the Dixon County Rural Water District number two is proposing an expansion to its existing service area boundary. This would include the following sections and partial sections. Section 15, the southeast quarter of section 16, the north half of the northeast quarter of section 21, the north half of the northeast quarter of section 22, the north half of the northwest quarter of section 22, all-in township 16 South, range 1 East of the sixth principal meridian, Dixon County, Kansas. That's attached here as Exhibit A. Are there any other comments that anyone would want to make or questions as far as this public hearing is concerned? Hearing no further comments, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. We do have that later as one of the resolutions to consider. So we'll go back to that resolution when we get to that part of the agenda. So we'll go ahead and return to our slideshow.
Okay.
That's a rather thoughtful pose there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's Tom.
Tom thinking. This is looking at, we're still inside the county clerk's office. This will be their front windows, front counter for-
Right over to the west.
We're looking to the northeast. We're kind of back in, looking at the, this is the, if you look outside these windows, that's the hallway.
Oh, okay.
There'll be a counter here, and that's where the receptionist staff will be sitting. So. And then we're moving down on the main floor. This is kind of in the hallway. Just if this would be going out the old front door of the courthouse. So we're kind of standing about where the door into administration is. And this is Barb's clerk's office in here. And then this would be the treasurer's office back over here. As you can see, this was, has been enclosed, and she'll have a counter across here. Her counter was reduced in size at her request. And so she'll have a door that goes in. It'll be a little bit more secure for her office. And this is just looking at it from a different angle. We've since had to open it, got all kinds of stuff stored in there right now, but kind of showing the bulkhead and then where her counter will be. And this is looking at, we're kind of standing in the front entrance to the, what used to be the main entrance to the courthouse. This is a new door that was cut in for the register deeds office. This will be their main door in and out. And then this is going into the treasurer's office. And Leah will be able to close those doors at 4:30 or whenever she shuts business down and be able to control things a little bit better. Oh, I guess I got an arrow to it. So this is standing in that doorway looking west. So this is the old west entrance that'll be enclosed with Leah's office being there. And there'll be counters across here and across here for them to deal with the public. And then this is back in the old vault for the register of deeds. They requested a wall be put across here so that they could store some of the old, really old books and stuff back in there that have to be retained. And they don't necessarily want the public cruising through because of their condition. So that was installed. And then on the main floor, we now, the public restrooms will be back down this hallway. This is the hallway that used to go into your commission chambers. That's been opened up, and there'll be, I think it's women's on one side, men's, and then there's a, just like a family or unisex, whatever you call it, restroom there, where they have the baby changing table and things. Then there'll be a door here that goes to the outside, and to that immediate left, where you guys used to meet, is now a storeroom for Barbara to store election equipment so they could pull up outside, which is kind of in the circle drive of the Sally Port to load and unload election equipment at election time. So make it much more conducive for doing that and easier for them. Then off to the right of that, back through a storage room is the electrical service room, which also has a door that goes out to the north so that service people can come in and out and don't have to go clear through security and come to the courthouse. And this is kind of that storeroom. This is looking in that hallway that behind that goes out that door to the north. So this originally was going to be a little bit of a conference room. But when we had that pillar in the middle, it's load bearing, and we decided just to make it a storeroom because we're going to have, I think, enough conference rooms elsewhere to- Now, they're moving down in the basement. This is at the, kind of in front of where the elevator, the women's restroom is on the east end, looking back west. There would be Chancey's office down there. We've got the men's restroom here and then a break room, women's restroom's right here to the immediate left, like it used to be. And then we walk inside the appraisers' office. This would be their front counter. This would be Tim's office to give you some orientation. And so it's all open at this point. And we put this wall back, which, and this is just looking at the counter from the other way. That wall, we put that in, and that's going to be a small conference hearing room for the appraisers. So they actually have a private room. They can close the doors to do their tax hearings. We've never had that before. Of course, then the desks and stuff. And this will be Lisa's office back there, same place that Bruce and Bruce had his office. So and of course, we've got all new windows and everything down there. Like we do everywhere. Looking in Chancey's office. You know, we have some of those old windows that are up in here, like went into the meeting room and went in between here and dispatch. Those are still in there. And I'll show you on the other floor where we boxed some of that stuff in. And I'll tell you why in a minute. So like right here next to the, this is looking into the, from the hallway back east now from Chancey's office. This will be the entrance into the appraisers' office. You can tell where this has been kind of boxed and cased in. Next to the doors throughout the courthouse, there was a glass panel, which was great in 1950s, but it's not so great now because of somebody, you have an act here, you have somebody disruptive, and you get thrown against glass, glass breaks. That is sheet glass. We found out it's not safety glass, extremely dangerous. Rather than taking that out in all those places that we boxed it in, and that's for that historical significance. You know, we're leaving everything intact that we can behind the walls so that someday in 3021, if they want to go back and build the courthouse back the way it was, they can do that. That's all I'll say about that. This is a new door that goes into the meeting room, where we used to have it on the backside over here across from dispatch. And now it comes in off the hallway. And this wall, there's a door right here. All the staircases by code have to be boxed off for fire and smoke protection. So each one, and we moved the door around here. And then this is just right behind where I was at. This is a new door off the hallway that'll go into the 911 center, into dispatch. This is Chancey's office, and that's the hallway door into the appraisers' conference room. And then inside dispatch, we've still got these two offices, which would have been Russ's, now Emily's. We added another office in here. This used to be where the dispatcher's communications room was. That's been converted into a second office now for their assistant training officer. And then they also have a bathroom of their own back here. And this will be a little break room, coffee nook, whatever you call it, with a refrigerator and a microwave and a little sink. This is the, used to be the register deeds vault, but now will be the communications room. And this is looking through that doorway into that room where it's at right now. You'll have the dispatch furniture that will wrap around this corner. So there'll be a seat here, a seat here, and a seat here. So three dispatchers will have all the technology in front of them on that end. And we will have room over here for expansion. So in 5, 10, 25, 40 years, they need to add another console dispatcher they can. This is kind of looking back the other way. This is an IT closet. We've kind of designed this thing very favorably for technology. Rather than running wires from, like all the consoles, clear back to the server room from all the floors, we run wires to each IT room, which then is fiber optically fit, fed back to the server room. So we don't have, there's already enough wires running up down the hallways. We used to have hundreds, literally. Now, there'll be one fiber optic line that runs between each floor. And all the floor wires are be color coded, run into each IT closet. So that'll be much easier to service and trace. And it's nice to be able to do that at one time and plan it strategically rather than having literally 35 years of advanced stage technology that went in by different companies that just threw it above the ceiling, and it looks like a rat's nest deluxe on steroids. So that's all been removed. And so each one of those floors has an IT closet for to service those needs. Now, we're looking in the meeting room from the west end, in that door that was installed. We've got the smaller portion of the meeting room here and then the bigger side, just like it used to be. We now have a bulkhead that will go across at that sliding door we'll attach to that we didn't have before to make it look a little nicer. And of course, the suspended ceiling will be installed as well. So that's looking from the other way. New windows are installed. So. And now we're looking at the east end of the main entrance. This is the old sheriff's department entrance. And then this is that temporary door and stuff that's installed right outside the sheriff's department. There'll be a door right here that's cut in that will go into your chambers, which is the garage area, the old garage, that hadn't been cut in yet. And then we're talking about right next to that, right in this area, putting the jail door display thing that we're going to make with a section of the old, one of the old jail cells from upstairs. You know, they don't build jails anymore with bars. That's a thing of the past. And, you know, we're all raised with that picture of standing behind the bars near in jail. But we thought it might be nice to create a display there of what that looked like. We've taken a picture of the inside of the cell that'll be behind it. Then we're also going to salvage the control panel from upstairs, which is about this wide, about that deep. And if you haven't seen it, it's got bars, handles that for each cell. You pull that handle down in a big crank, and you crank it, and that opens the cell doors. So we're going to salvage that, keep that for the display as well. And Tom and I talked about how to case that in a note casing on each side, make it really look neat. I think it'll be pretty cool. So that's it. So that's where we're at as of this week. Again, things, that was Tuesday when I took those, and things have changed since then. I know the windows people been here, and they're continuing to do the demolition. And, you know, although it seems like it's going slow, it continues to progress every day. So any questions you have, I'll try to answer them. But other than that, that's all I've got.
I think we need to, that one shot of Tom there, we need to get that print off.
It has that fan behind it. It'd be Tom and his fan.
I'll let him know that.
Tell him it was Craig's idea. I don't want to- Craig kind of has a burr in the saddle because my name's above his name on the plaque.
They did it by district.
Oh, okay. Well, that's true.
You know, during the, during the Phase 1 of the jail project, Tom was that superintendent for that project. And they brought in Brad Severi from Boyd Builders, who was started out as superintendent on the courthouse renovation. Brad has been pulled off now, and Tom has taken over renovations. So he's our superintendent now on that. And so they're both very good at what they're-
Done a great job.
Yeah, doing an excellent job.
Okay, Doug?
We're moving forward with our petition pleading in regards to the tax. So that's what's taking place now as a result of that. There's been at least one individual that's paying the tax, due taxes will come off of that. It's on there. So we're moving forward with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to notices and communications. And we did have a few. This is from Barb Jones, our county clerk slash election officer. And this is being sent out, she had told us this, to all Abilene voters. Due to the remodeling of the courthouse, several offices have temporarily relocated to the civic center, which is usually the polling place for the Abilene city residents. The voting location for all Abilene city residents for this election only will be the home west building at 2104 North Buckeye. This location was- This location was formerly known as Green Ford Building. And so once again, this is voting at this location for this one election only. Advanced voting in person will begin on October 13th at the Civic Center. 2001 Northwest Second, so that is just for the advanced voting. You may also fill out a request to receive a ballot by mail. And you can call her office if you have any questions. We also received just a couple of other things. We have from the OCCK, um, they have their publication that they send out and tell us about some of the programs and outreach here, not only in Salina and Celine County, but it includes Dickinson County. Um, we also have a notice of a public notice regarding a proposed water pollution control permit for ag-related waste. And so if we have any comments, we can send that in. There also is going to be a public hearing that we can zoom in. That's gonna be taking place on October 8th. And this is just regarding some statutory procedures for the Kansas Water Plan. Was there anything else that anyone else had received that they would want to bring up at this time?
Nothing.
So we'll go ahead and move on to our resolutions. And we have a number of those that we've, um, and items that we've added to our agenda. So, um, the first one I think we'll consider, because it's already marked, is a resolution to the Board of County Commissioners. This is for the expansion of the boundary of the Dickinson County Rural Water District Number Two. We've already had earlier in our meeting today, the public hearing regarding that resolution. And the only thing is that I don't think I have to necessarily read it again because it was in there. On the motion, we would want to have the boundary area, and it's known as Exhibit A, attached to the motion to adopt that resolution. I would go ahead and move that we adopt Resolution 091621. This is for the expansion of the boundary of the Dixon County Rural Water District Number Two. And it's described, um, that service area in Exhibit A. And that would be included into the resolution.
Second motion.
We have the motion. We have the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And let's see. There's a place for you to sign, Ron. So I'll go ahead and give that to you. It's right at the top of that page. It's the second page of the previous. Then we'll set that aside for Janelle or Brad to take to Barb. Okay, the next item that we have is to consider a letter to the U.S. Economic Development Administration in support of the grant application of the Abilene CVB.
That is a letter that Julie had sent over requesting, so she's applying for a grant to the, uh, for a marketing, uh, project from the Heart of America Comprehensive Regional Promotional and Travel Enhancement Project. And she thought maybe a letter of support might help with that application, so.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have that letter of support. Also, she does mention in her application that the tourism plays an integral part of the Dixon County economy. According to Kansas Tourism, visitors spent nearly $23 million in Dickinson County in 2019. Is there a motion to, um, send in this letter of support?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And let's see, there's a place for you to sign, Ron. And also I'll get that back to Craig. It's on the second page. Okay, the other item we have, and this also will be by resolution. And this was to, this was added to the agenda to reappoint Levita Montgomery to represent Dixon County on the NCFHAAO A Board of Directors.
I, we would reappoint Levita Montgomery to represent the Dixon County on the NCFHAAO A Board of Directors.
I'll second that. Okay. Any further discussion? And that resolution, uh, would be what, 0916?
21A.
21 dash A. So that's part of your motion?
Yes, sir.
And second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And once again, you know, signature here. I'll leave that there. Find a second. Oh, then Ron, I'll have you sign it right there. I do not believe we have any other business or unfinished business or other business unless there's something that someone would want to bring up at this time.
I move adjourned.
I'll second it. For the motion, the second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.